Good evening and welcome to the July 6th meeting, July 6th, 2021, meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. If you all rise and join us, Commissioner Garrettson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Pressby, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Rossler, let the rest reflect that all commissioners are present, with the exception of Vice Chair.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, you received copies of the minutes from our June 15th meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes, could we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Looney?
Motion that they are approved is written.
All right. Commissioner Garrettson?
I second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of our June 15th meeting as presented. Commissioner Hastings' machine is not working tonight again, so we will do things by a hand vote, so all in favor, raise your right, raise your hand. And Commissioner Savage was absent, so he abstains, so very good. So the minutes are approved on a six to zero to one vote. Thank you very much. Ms. Chow, any changes to the agenda tonight?
Good evening, Chair Rossler, no changes tonight.
All right, very good. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is a time the commission sets aside for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on our agenda. I have no speaker slips for oral communication. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? If not, we will move along to our public hearings. The procedure tonight for public hearings on all three items will be a staff report given by, by our staff. The applicant will then be afforded a time to do a supplemental presentation or be available for answering questions. At the end of that time, I will open the public hearing. If you wish to address the commission, you need to fill out a speaker slip, so, and you'll give it to Ms. Pressby down here at the end, and she'll give it to me, and I usually call them in order that I, that I've received them. So then I will close the public hearing, open it up to commissioners' discussion, we'll have that discussion, and then we'll make a decision. So first item, public hearing item on our agenda is P 200276 Vista Hanalee by Wilmington Residential. Ms. Chow?
Yes, thank you Chairman Rossler. Commissioners, good evening. My name is Patsy Chow. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development, City Planner. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present this first public hearing item, which is the Site Development Plan and Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map for Vista Hanalee Project. So before we start writing to the details of the project, just wanted to give you a little bit of background to put things in perspective regarding the site. About five years, six years ago, or close to six years ago, the planning commission looked at this particular project site and recommended it to the city council approval of a tentative map for 23 single-family residential lots at this very same location. Then in January of the next year, in 2016, the city council approved the tentative map for the 23 single-family lots and approved moving forward the application to LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, in charge of annexations, detachments of particular areas to jurisdictions, so for the annexation of the subject site at 157 and 1/2 Hanalee Drive. Later on, September 2017, LAFCO approved the reorganization and the annexation of the 23 single-family residential subdivision. And years past, unfortunately, the developer was not able to develop, build the project as it was proposed with the 23 homes. So about three years later, October 2020, Wilmington Residential comes into the picture with a proposed project that you see here today for the 45 detached condo units. So just a little bit of history on that, as some of you commissioners may have been present at that time, so you may have some recollection about the prior project. So the proposed project, as mentioned before, is a Site Development Plan, SDP, Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, VTSM, for 45 detached condo units on a seven approximately acre parcel, that's gross acreage, and that arrives at a density of 6.4 dwelling units per acre on this site. There'll be drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, all of the associated infrastructure that comes along with the proposed project, along with private streets, there's a private street A and B, and private common driveways serving the particular houses. There'd be a total of parking spaces for 181 vehicles, nine of which are required to be inside, in the garage, so be two-car garages for each of the residences. Then on top of that, there will be 91 uncovered parking spaces that are also required for guests, but about 45 of those would be actually on the driveway of each of the homes, and then the remaining 46 would be distributed throughout the project site. That's including already the two handicap parking spaces that are shown near the, one of the open space areas, common open space areas. Speaking of which, there are common open space, usable open space areas, two of them that are accommodating barbecue area, seating area, trellis, shade structure, trees, and so forth, and then there's also private open space areas for each of the houses, and there's also seven, about seven parklet areas that are distributed throughout the project site to, in order to meet the open space requirements. So this is aerial photo showing the subject site that's outlined in red, and the blue is actually the city boundary. The existing uses surrounding the site mostly comprised of residential, single-family. We also have Stone Brook Church to the southeast of the subject site. The designation in the general plan is medium-density residential at 10 dwelling units per acre. The zone is currently R1B, which is a single-family residential zone, and that's 6,000 square foot lots, and you may be wondering why we don't have to rezonate to match the general plan designation, and that is due to SB 330, which I have it stated here on this slide, which is according to the Housing Crisis Act, which was passed in 2019. And what that basically does, and it comes down from the state, is that the project does not need to actually, or is not required to actually rezonate the site to what would be then an RM10, which is be a multi-family zone at 10 dwelling units per acre, to be consistent with the general plan designation. But they do not need to do that per the SB 330, and as long as it is meeting the densities that's called out in the general plan. And furthermore, the development standards that we are actually applying, it is per the RM zone as close as we can get to this particular development in terms of setbacks and building site area, open space requirements, and landscaping, as it more related, more closely relates to the particulars of the general plan designation in the general plan. So the city may in fact apply these development standards as long as it does not affect the development and it does not prevent the developer from reaching the density that is currently allowed in the general plan. So I just wanted to state that, to clarify that, why that is, and that is because of SB 330. So the project site and just the photos here of the project site itself, mostly vacant, there is a house that's been unoccupied, that'll be demolished as part of the project, but just starting on the top row, just looking south at the site on the left side, east, looking east at the site, it's north, so just coming like across. The bottom pictures is you're looking towards Phillips Street, towards west from the project site, and then the opposite direction, looking into the site from Phillips Street. The last picture on the lower right-hand corner is just a view from Hanalee Drive, looking at that emergency access road, the secondary access road that would be gated off, it's mainly for fire, sanitation, sewer access purposes, but nonetheless, I just wanted to take a quick picture of that to show you where that is. From Hanalee Drive, you have looking east on Hanalee Drive, and Stone Brook Church is on the left side on that, that picture, and then looking the other direction, looking west on Hanalee Drive, and you see all the existing single-family homes that are there on Hanalee. So the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, as it's shown here, and it's split like that, but it, just imagine that it both connects, I could not get it to fit on one screen, but that's how it was presented to us on separate sheets because of the size of the project. Nonetheless, you have the, the main entry, the cul-de-sac at Phillips Street, the 45 detached condo units spread throughout the site on a one-lot condominium map, so that it's not individual, single-family lots. So it is a condominium map, and that's, that's why there are detached condo units. There are two common usable open space areas, A and B, as they're circled here on the map, and there is the larger one that's kind of more on the left side there, on the central portion of the site, and then one that's tucked to the corner there, as you're bending on the road on private street Bay, B, towards the east. And there are three, or I should say two biofiltration basins, BNP, BNC, that are close to the cul-de-sac at Phillips Street for stormwater treatment purposes, and then there's the underground vault that's 13-foot deep, which is BNP A, and it's towards the eastern end of the project site is underground vault right there, that's pretty close to the open space area B. The landscape plan shows that 31% of the site is comprised of landscaping, it does meet the requirements of our zone and our landscape manual, they're utilizing native and non-native plant materials throughout different pallets, different locations throughout the site. That inset, the smaller depiction there is just showing the actual private usable open space areas versus the common usable open space areas, which is the green areas, and then the orange areas is essentially the, the yards, the backyards, the side yards of each of the, where the homes are located, in order to meet the private and the common usable open space area requirements in our code. The proposed floor plans, there is Plan 1, 2, and 3. Plan 1 and 2 are three beds, two and a half baths, just a bit of a variety or distinction between the two in terms of square footage and the setup of the floor plan. Nonetheless, there's 19 homes for each of these Plan 1 and 2, and the remaining seven units are at Plan 3, which is the four bedrooms, three and a half baths. In terms of the architectural elevations, these are two-story residences, a maximum height of 30 feet. The setbacks that they're adhering to is per the RM zone standards, with the footnote the fact that on the front yard, they're not meeting the specifics of the separation between the garage and the, the edge of the road and to the rest of the building, and that is what I pointed out in the staff report per SB 330, in terms of not meeting that particular, those particular two standards. But other than that, they're adhering to all the remaining standards. There is two distinct exterior types, architectural elevations, the agrarian farm style and the craftsman style, and each of those have three different color schemes or variations for each of them. There was a mitigated neg deck, or mitigated negative declaration prepared per CECL requirements, and it was available for public review from June 2nd through June 22nd. We did receive one comment letter from Rincon Band, Louis Señu, and basically talking about the cultural resources, the mitigation, so we've addressed that, incorporated that into the conditions as presented to us by the commenter. And in terms of the general plan, development code, and design guidelines and conformances, as I mentioned before, the proposed density of 6.4 dwelling units per acre is below and within the allowed 10 dwelling units per acre permitted by the general plan. The project does meet the requirements of the RM zone, with the exception, as I mentioned in the prior slides, about the 20 feet and the 15 feet, the front yard requirements from the driveway line as far as to the face of the garage, and also the remainder of the residential unit, as these are being waived per SB 330 provisions, in order to allow the development within the density that's allowed under the general plan. So the staff's recommendation here tonight is to adopt the mitigated neg deck and the mitigation monitoring reporting program that's attached at the back of the MND for 45 detached condo units, and also to approve the site development plan and vesting tentative map for the 45 units. And this pretty much concludes the staff's presentation. The applicant is here tonight. They also have a presentation that they would like to share with the commission, so if you like, he can go straight into it, or if I can entertain questions if you have, so it's up to the chair and the commission at this point. Thank you.
Let's hear from the applicant first, and then ask questions of both staff and the applicant. So if Representative from Wilmington would like to address us?
That's correct.
All right, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners and staff. Very grateful to be here tonight and to go over this project with you. Got it right there. Thank you, Patsy. First off, I kind of want to kind of run you through a little history of Wilmington, so everyone is kind of aware of who we are and we're bringing to the community. So right here's a little history. We've been in business for a little under, a little over 95 years, going on 100 years soon. We started in the 1920s, building kind of custom homes for celebrities in like Hollywood, and just branched out from there, and we've gone full with communities. And we've had built close to 50 communities in the San Diego region, and so we've been doing this for quite some time, and we have, I think, about two in the City of Vista that I was trying to look up. I found some old brochures, but unfortunately, I didn't have the time to put them in the slides, that would have been great. They're like from the 70s. But ultimately, we've been doing this for a while, and it's, it's good to be back and have another project in the city. So let's go here. So Patsy pretty much went over most of this stuff, and it's going to be just kind of a generalization of it at this point. The location of the site, you can see that we're next to the church, and the residential surrounding us, you know, from this location, you get an idea of what's going to be going in there, and what's currently existing at the site right now are, is a vacant lot. So kind of the, some of the benefits from us doing this, we've had a lot of outreach with the community. This does attract a lot of vagrants, and ultimately, you can't really see it from the street because of all the high vegetation that's in place. So with communication, working close with the neighbors and stuff, we've made sure that that place is locked up, but ultimately, the goal is to take this down and blight from the community and bring forward something that's just very, you know, good, that's going to be well-received with the community, and, you know, everyone's pretty much on board and ready for it. I get calls a couple times a week asking me about the neighbors, someone's in there, so I think for the benefit of the community, it's going to be good. Okay, ultimately, the site plan right here, and I didn't want to go over too much because Patsy covered most of it, but just to kind of key points right here is, you know, the community itself is going to be fully vegetated. So with that being said, it's going to help out with the current situation right there, which is brush management. We've got to trim down the site quite a bit, it's a, you know, just a fire hazard. So with that in place, with the community having, having that's going to help out as well. And some of the other items we have is, I'd like to point out, is just kind of our, you know, what we're going to be doing with the cul-de-sac, completing that from, on Phillips, bringing it all the way through, full circulation with the sidewalks. I feel like it's got a good overall feel for the neighborhood coming into it, so even, even neighbors can come and walk through if they, they needed. But we feel like that this has an overall open feel for everyone as they're walking through for families. I know I live in a community just like this, and the little park areas do get used quite a bit, so we felt that those were some really standout spots, especially during the summer. Okay. So just put together a little bit of some community benefits for, you know, what's going in, you know, ultimately, the beautification of this site. So right now, as it stands, you have just raw land with a, a structure that's, you know, gets occupied by just some unwanted individuals at times. With that, it goes away and comes in this brand-new beautiful site that we have for new families. I know for me personally, this would be something that I definitely want to move into, it's just perfect for the community in this area. After speaking with many of the, many of the neighbors, they were really looking forward to that, so that's a good thing. They also, one of the benefits is, you know, improving the drainage and storm drain water quality, so there's a lot of runoff that happens with the site. We'll be collecting that and cleaning it, so it's not going to be collecting in certain areas. I know that at times with large storms, water pools, and it ends up on that church side, so with this, it's going to help redirect it where it needs to. We're also improving this area to have an EVA access, which it is only emergency vehicle, but at the same time, with that being said, there's a driveway that goes down that services for residents right there, and we're going to be widening that, it's going to give them more space for two lanes to go up and down. I know that it bottlenecks at times, and you've got to back all the way out, it's just, it's kind of dangerous, so we'll be putting that in, and as well as, I think one of the main things I'd like to focus on is, you know, for emergency vehicles, that access point actually doubles as, you know, just in case if there's a fire on any side, it actually opens up the area for residents if they need to, to get out. So you have now kind of a circulation point in emergencies from Hanalee to Phillips. That's pretty much it. Ultimately, we're looking forward to bringing this project to the city, and I'm open to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Not yet? All right, sit close, I'm sure there will be some. All right, thank you very much. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I have two speaker slips. Mr. Charles Lewis says that he does not want to speak, but he is in favor of the project, so we will note that in the record. And then, Devina, Jocelyn? And you have three minutes to tell the commission your concerns.
I won't need those many. I'm one of the people on that tiny little road that we have to take turns driving down, and we were really looking forward in the last project to getting a road a fire truck could go through, and we've had two fires this year, and that wasn't very fun when the fire truck got stuck, so I'm in favor of getting a fire road.
Very good, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to address the commission on the Wilmington project? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, I would just like to ask the applicant about turning some of those, some of that open space into a playground for the kids there. There are quite a ways are kind of in there, so I'd like your comment about maybe turning it, one of those areas into a playground for the little kids.
Yeah, I had the same concern as Commissioner Garrettson. I thought for the number of families and the number of kids that are potentially going to be living here, that there was a lack of recreation facilities, so.
Sure. So one of the things we were looking at is the ultimate site and the fit, and what we could accommodate in some of these spaces. We looked at, you know, possible totlot and just what we could fit in. Ultimately, a lot of the equipment that we were looking at for the sites just kind of came pretty crammed in locations, and we weren't able to put something that is just, you know, good. I mean, we've looked at it a couple times, I mean, ultimately, it just came down to where we can fit it, and especially with the SDGNE vaults, it's on this look, on this, on one of the largest open space sites. We, and being free and clear, we wanted to make sure that we had the space that was necessary for them. So with that, we, we opted for just having the, the shade structure and the barbecues, and we looked at a couple other projects we've had, and where we didn't have that, and we still felt that the community had what it needed, and really, that's kind of how we focused on that, so that's how we left it out.
My concern is, and I will move that we require that, so you know, because I think with the number of kids that are going to be there, the small kids, what, four-bedroom and so forth.
Right.
There's going to be a lot of small kids there, and there is no place close by, I mean, they can get on, if they can ride a bicycle, they can get on the bike trail and go to Escondido, but other than that.
Ultimately, we can look into see what we can fit in these locations, for sure.
Thank you. I have seen projects like this up in, in Orange County, and at the end of every one of the alleys, in the, one particular project that I'm familiar with, there's a basketball It's just happened in my son's neighborhood, and we were the first ones to buy our grandson's a basketball hoop to put at the end of the alley. So you, are you going to have any problems with that, or if the residents want to take and use it that way?
Ultimately, I don't think so, and based on what, how we kind of lay out the CCNRs, that we can kind of regulate what can go in and out, and for ultimately some of the locations, we shouldn't have really any issues, we haven't had in the past, and just kind of how we make it, it, it's up to the community if they want to change that down the low, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how we usually address that.
Also, the alleys are marked off at 27 feet for cornhole boards, so.
We can fit the cornhole.
Any other questions? I had a couple. I'm concerned about the units that, that are visible from South Santa Fe and the rear elevations, and most of them are in pretty good shape. The P, P2 and P3 elevations, I thought, were, were acceptable, but the P1 elevations are basically a blank stucco wall with window surrounds around the windows, and I was, I think you need to enhance at least a second story.
Okay.
Since there'll be, there'll be a fence there, so I think there, there needs to be some second story enhancement of the architectural elevations on the, on the south, or on the, on the elevations facing Santa Fe on Unit 1.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. And, oh, one of the things that the commission has become, become concerned about in projects like this over the last several years is making sure that your residents park their cars in their garage and not use them for storage.
Right.
So we'll probably have a condition for you that in the CCNRs and the HOA, gives the HOA the ability to inspect garages to make sure they're being used for, for parking and not storage.
Yes, absolutely, we, we do do that all the time, and that's something we can do.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Looney?
I just have one comment regarding the retaining walls that face Santa Fe or the railroad tracks, bicycle trail.
Mike on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
With the wall heights that we've got, I would like for Wilmington to explore the possibility of using an earth-tone color to the keystone walls rather than the basic gray. There's a development across the street where they've used all gray block, and it's, it's sterile.
Yes.
And because of the slopes that we've got facing the railroad tracks in Santa Fe, I think it would really enhance the curb appeal of your development if we get something other than gray block. So I know it adds.
Our marketing said the same thing, so.
Adds the element of cost to it, but I think the visual.
Yes.
Enhancement is going to help your overall project.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Anyone else? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to make a, make a decision here. Commissioner Garrison, would you like to start it off?
I would like to move to, we approve that with one condition.
There can be several.
There are several, but one is that, that a playground be, be developed there somewhere on the site for the. but one is that a playground be developed there somewhere on the site for the smaller kids.
Children's play structure.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Looney, did you want to add a condition about the color of the wall?
Yes, that would be good, but I do have a question for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
If I could just pause for that. Is it possible that the project could be conditioned such that when the adjacent ball fields are, if and when those are developed, that a street connection could tie these two developments together?
No, because we don't know exactly what's going to happen, and I think it would be unfair, I think, at this point to impose something on this developer not knowing what's going to happen in the future. So I would not suggest that.
Okay, thank you.
And they do have an emergency access on Hanale?
Correct. It's serving those three, three or four homes.
Right.
And so we've got that emergency access. Then we're going to have a row of homes, and then another street.
Right.
And then another row of homes.
Yep, understand.
Somewhat problematic with the site development.
All right. So we have a motion. I would like to add to the motion two conditions. One, for the CCNRs and HOA documents to include parking management, and staff has the standard condition that we've used before in the past that would be beneficial. And then the second one on the Plan 1, the second story enhancement of the architectural elevations of the units that face South Santa Fe. So those are my concerns.
Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
May I ask a clarification on the condition on the elevations on the enhancement? Would that be in the form of additional windows, or just architectural features, or a combination?
Architectural features. They have siding on the front elevation. They could do that across the second story of the rear elevation. A change in color, change in materials, or additional features like shutters.
Combination thereof?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Did we get a second for the motion?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Aguera?
Yeah, so my concern has been with traffic. And I remember the traffic circle that we developed up there on Mar Vista that never got fully developed. So it's tight. They're going to come out on Phillips. There's not going to be a light there, right? We don't, we're not requiring that. I don't think that'd be necessary. But this traffic study that they did, so they came up with less than, or at 450 trips a day. Doesn't sound like it's enough. We've got three and four bedroom units, and I guess we all assume that it's going to be families with three or four kids, or two or three kids moving in, but just, I don't see that happening. I feel like there's going to be a lot more adults living there, and we could have maybe double the number of trips that we're talking about.
Yeah, the way that this is looked at, based on the new approach, as far as trying to understand what the impacts are in terms of traffic, in terms of vehicle miles traveled, is looked at differently than what it was in the past with levels of service. So when they're looking at the amount of trips that are generated, when the traffic engineer that prepared the report, coming up with the 450, and looking at the new threshold, which is the thousand, or being under a thousand being acceptable, in other words, is a new methodology that they had to consider because it came into effect, I believe it was July 1, 2020, as it came down from SB 743. So that's kind of a brand new way of looking at it in terms of, again, compared to how it was before, and not so much about looking at our levels of service, intersections, as much as more in terms of miles traveled. And therefore, within that threshold, that's when the conclusion comes, even though it may sound, the numbers, like Commissioner Aguera is pointing out, as maybe not sounding sufficient, or it sounds like there should be more out of the 45 units, that is the conclusion in the report, that we looked at from, coming from the consultant, and analyzed by our traffic engineer as well.
So the traffic engineer, our traffic engineer confirmed that?
Correct. So he looked at the, Sam Hassan and our traffic engineer worked with their traffic consultant. There were several revisions to it, back and forth, obviously, to arrive at the conclusions with all the analysis that was done in order to produce this conclusion in the report. And so staff feels pretty confident with what they, was arrived at in terms of their conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the 10 trips per unit for a single family has been a standard for a long time. If they were trying to use less, eight, for a multi-family project, I think there'd be a real concern, but that's kind of what it is, so. Commissioner Looney?
Yep. Tapatsi again. So what I hear you saying is, basically, the state is dictating what we can and cannot do with traffic, with parking, and with density.
In a nutshell, yes. And I think it all has to go back to the Housing Crisis Act.
All right. We still need a second. Commissioner Hastings, seconds.
Second.
Very good. All right. So the motion's been made and seconded to include four additional conditions, the parking requirement, or the parking management requirement, the enhanced elevations on Plan 1 for the second story, for units facing South Santa Fe, a tot structure, and the color of the retaining wall. Okay? All in favor? Raise your hand. One, two, three, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. We will now move on to our second public hearing. Let staff switch out here for just a second. All right. Our second public hearing is a special use permit for a residential care facility at 6882 Veilview Drive. Mr. Mangasarian, I believe the staff report is yours.
Good evening, Chairman Rossler, commissioners, members of the staff, members of the public. My name is Rafi Mangasarian. I am the Assistant Planner for the City of Vista. Before you tonight is a project for a special use permit for a large residential care facility for the elderly, for a maximum of eight persons. I forgot how to use this. Property is currently zoned E1 estate. General plan designation is Low Density Residential, LD. Surrounding land uses are all residential, zoned the same way. This is an aerial photo of the project site, highlighted in red, and this is the site photo of the property. And the proposed project is for a special use permit for a large residential care facility. Properties in existing single-family residence. It will be the addition of two beds to the six existing, for a total of eight beds. Existing landscaping and parking is currently on-site. Applicant is to install an ADA parking stall and ADA accessibility ramps. It's a 24-hour custodial care for the elderly. Highlighted in blue is an existing driveway. Highlighted in red is the existing residence, and highlighted in orange is the existing outdoor patio. And this is the proposed floor plan. It's just the addition of two more beds within the existing walls of the main residence. General plan designation, as noted earlier, is Low Density Residential, LD, allows for residential uses, including residential care facilities. Property is owned E1 estate. Development standards for the building height is unchanged. Landscaping is unchanged, and parking, they're adding a handicap parking stall. Basis for approval, general plan designates the property as Low Density, and the zoning designation for the property is E1, in which a large residential care facility is consistent with the general plan designation for the site, because a large residential care facility is a use that can be permitted per Planning Commission approval within residential zones. The proposed use requires a special use permit for approval. Thus, the proposed large residential care facility use must be reviewed by the Planning Commission to make a final determination. All required onsite improvements are included in the project design, and the subject site provides adequate parking and circulation to accommodate the proposed use. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the special use permit for the operation of a large residential care facility for up to eight persons located at 682 Veilview Drive. And that concludes staff's presentation. And I am open to any comments or questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Does the applicant have a presentation, or just here to answer questions?
No presentation from the applicant, just answer any questions you may have.
All right. Commissioners, any questions of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Hastings?
It's for me to ask a question here.
Commissioner Hastings' voting machine is not working this evening, so we're making accommodations for it.
Helping out. So my question is, is there a change in staffing requirements, moving from taking care of six people to eight people?
I don't believe so. I believe the current operation is being managed by Erin and Elizabeth Lazarus. If the applicant would like to expand on, if the applicant would like to expand on the staffing information, he can expand on that a little bit more if he wants.
Name an address for our record, please?
So I'm.
Need to speak into the microphone.
So I'm Erin Lazarus. I'm the owner, 682 Veilview Drive. So to answer your question, the health and safety code doesn't stipulate a number of staff. It just says adequate staff is required, with no number of people given. So we currently have, me and my wife, both RNs that work there, and then I have two full-time caregivers, and then I have two additional caregivers that are on call as needed, that we can call in if, for whatever reason.
Thank you. I was sort of under the impression that it was just the two of you, and that didn't seem like enough.
Don't go away.
Okay.
Any other questions down here? No. We're going to have two beds in one room. Are you looking for those folks to be related, or will they be unrelated, or?
Most likely related. We've gotten inquiries for married couples to move in, so that's why we decided to try to make this change.
All right. And I noticed on the floor plan, there was a set of stairs going down. Is there a second level to the building, and what's down there?
So it's a walkout basement, but it's just currently used for storage. There's no keep people in the basement.
Yeah. And within the facility, is there, are there accommodations for staff, or is there an office or anything? I didn't say anything like that.
Well, that basement downstairs, I mean, I have a desk set up down there that I use for office space.
All right. Very good. Super. Any other questions? Just a moment. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes. Have you had any issues with the neighbors, parking, compatibility, complaints?
We've not. I've got a pretty, I've got a, it's, I've got a pretty good space right now for parking, because none of these folks are able to drive. We essentially bring the services to them. So we have a physician that comes once a month, or like a physical therapist that'll come once a month, so we don't have a lot of, we don't have a need for a lot of parking, or that kind of thing.
Didn't have to do a traffic study, huh?
Correct.
And just to back up onto that, what you had asked about any complaints, I did check with code enforcement, and there has been no issues on the property or complaints coming in since they've started operation, which is about almost a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost a year.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Aguera?
So just to, I guess, go off Commissioner's question, on average, how many cars do you have per day?
As far as trips in and out?
Visitors, family?
Probably two, maybe three on a busy day.
I've had some experience in this area, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's not super busy. And we're not adding extra square footage at all, right?
None.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Very good. Any questions, any other questions of staff or the applicant? Thank you very much.
All righty.
This is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing. I do have one speaker You can take your mask off and name an address for our record.
My name's Rick Fellows. I live directly behind them at 842 Veilview.
Could you step just a bit closer to the microphone?
My name is Rick Fellows.
Yes.
I live at 842 Veilview, directly behind their care facility. And I'm okay with them having that going from six to eight. It just said that if I didn't say something now, it might not be held. I could use it, I guess, later. As long as it stays at eight, it's fine. That neighborhood is like half acres, acres, things like that. It says large residential. I just don't want them to decide later on, I'm going to build something else, I'm going to have another eight people, or this or that. It is a, you know, it is a residential community, and we all have large lots, and we like it that way, as opposed to some kind of commercial. They're great neighbors, but I just want to have my say.
Okay, very good. If they do change at all, they will have to amend their use permit, and there will be another public hearing. You'll be notified of that and have another opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I will close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner Commissioner Aguera?
Yeah, I don't really see a problem with this. I mean, there's a huge demand for places like this. But I do share your concerns. You know, I live in a neighborhood with a half acre or more, and wouldn't want to see, in fact, we have a residential care facility in our street, and I believe there are four or six people there. But I assure you that they would have to come before us and city council to get that approved. So with that, I feel this is a good project. I mean, they're not adding square footage or anything like that, so I think, you know, I'm ready to support it.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, excuse me, approve the, or adopt the resolution granting a special use permit for. granting a special use permit for a residential care facility for the elderly located at 682 Veilview Drive.
Commissioner Looney.
And I will second that.
All right. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second to approve. Please, any discussion, please raise your hand for approval. And it's approved unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Our third public hearing for the evening. All right. Our third public hearing tonight is for an off-site parking lot for Pace Clinic. Turner Healthcare Facilities acquisition is the applicant. Mr. Winters, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Rossler and members of the commission. Haven't been in the chambers in a while either, so let me see if this control works. There we go. This project is a special use permit. Site development plan for an off-site parking lot serving the Pace Clinic, which is located across the street from the project site. Applicant is Turner Healthcare Facilities, file number P200187. See if the clicker works. Project location shown in the aerial is on the north side of West Drive, approximately 400 feet west of North Emerald Drive. Let's point it out. There's existing single-family residents on the property that would be cleared to allow for the construction of a parking lot. The Pace Clinic, which the parking lot would be tied to, is located on the south side of West Drive, directly across the street. Project area is approximately one-half acre. It is one parcel. The existing general plan and zoning designations are shown on this slide. Surrounding properties to the north and west are multifamily residential zoned, RM21. This corresponds to the high-density general plan designation. The subject property and properties to the east and south are designated C1 commercial in the zoning and general commercial under the general plan. To summarize the proposed project, it's the construction of an ancillary parking lot at 1837 West Drive, which would serve as staff parking for the Pace Healthcare Clinic located across the street at 1830, 1840 West Drive. The parking lot would have 44 parking stalls, landscaped approximately 30% of the project site, which is double what's required by code. The project includes a signalized pedestrian crossing that would have push-button activation, and the site would be, have vehicular and pedestrian access gates at the frontage along West Drive. The next slide shows some of the project features. This is the project site plan. It is rotated to show a better image, so south is to the right of the slide, north is to the left. The project includes perimeter fencing and a block wall. Gates were shown at the property frontage. There would be a vehicle gate that's left open during business hours, which would be basically from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. as far as staff potentially being on-site. The facility across the street operates from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., closed Saturdays and Sundays. So, the facility would be closed after hours. The parking lot would be gated and wouldn't be used during nighttime or overnight. Fencing around the east and street frontage perimeters would be wrought iron. The C1 zone where the project site is located does require a six-foot minimum block wall along the western property line, which is at the bottom of the slide, where it's next to a residential zone. There is an easement at the rear of the property, and so that's why there are removable panel fences, which keeps the property secure while allowing for access to the easement if needed. Next slide shows the landscape plan, and it makes it a little easier to see the layout of the site with the parking spaces. Basically, two rows of parking with a drive aisle. Stormwater would sheet flow across the surface of the parking lot into the landscaping towards the west, where it goes into water treatment facilities underground. Staff's recommendation, the proposed project is exempt under CEQA guidelines for infill development projects, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the special use permit and site development plan for the construction of the off-site parking lot located 1837 West Drive. The applicant's representative is present to answer any questions along with staff, and we also have the project architect and engineer. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Aguilar.
So, there's an existing home there? Is it occupied, rented right now?
It is rented out right now.
And so, I'm assuming with this change, there will be a change in the property tax collected by the city. So, do we have any idea what the property tax is collected right now and what it will go to? Will it go up? Will it go down?
I don't have an estimate on that for tonight's report, no. I'm not sure if anyone else on staff might have any kind of guess at it, but it doesn't look like it.
Well, that's kind of important, wouldn't it be, to the city?
I really don't have an estimate on that. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
All right.
Commissioner Aguilar, that is not something that we typically look at as far as property tax revenues. I mean, from, I mean, we're planners, but, I mean, it is important, but we don't usually dive into the details of the finances of the, what it brings to the city. We can certainly look at that, but we wouldn't have an answer right now at this point.
All right. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes. Have we addressed the questions with the letter that was presented to us?
From Mr. Louis? Stefan Louis?
Yes, the letter was received today, so we didn't have a lot of time to get back to the property owner who provided it. This would be for a residence that's located to the west of the project site. But I believe most of the concerns raised in the letter are already covered in the conditions of approval. If there's anything that might, the commission might want to discuss or ensure is specifically covered by the conditions, we can do that item by item.
Know about overnight security.
The applicant has indicated that they will have security on the Pace Facility project site, and as part of that operation, they could have that security guard keep an eye on the parking lot facility.
So, as far as homeless, it would be very difficult to access this. They'd have to climb a, what, six-foot fence?
That's correct. It'd be gated in the front. The gate would be closed after hours. There would be a locked pedestrian access gate and fencing completely around the perimeter.
And this would be used, there would be some permit that it would be utilized only by the Pace employees?
That's how the applicant has proposed the project. That is included on the statement on the site plan, that it is for employee parking. It is not specifically a city condition in the project right now. That can easily be added as a condition of approval. I'm not sure if the applicant's representative would like to speak more on that, but it is the intent that the site will be used for staff parking.
I would like to hear from the applicant in terms of what they are going to do or what they're going to suggest to ensure that it's only used by the employees.
Sure. Jason Gremmager speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Jason Gremmager. I am the client's, or the applicant's consultant. And yes, they are comfortable with restricting that parking to their employees only. And one of the reasons for that is that their clientele are generally elderly. They are mostly drop-off to the site, or they need ADA accessible spaces so they can access the site easily. So, one thing they were cognizant of was remaining, or keeping that site remaining for employees only, so that they had as much parking for remaining staff and clients on the main site as possible.
So, you're going to open the gate in the morning. Employees are going to go there. What is going to prevent somebody that is not an employee from parking there?
They'll have security on-site, so they'll have security-making sweeps, and I'm sure that we could take a look at having some sort of employee pass or sticker for...
I would suggest that, especially in that area.
Sure, we could take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Savage.
I have a question for the applicant. So, the employees will be parking during employee, while Pace is open, correct?
Correct.
So, is there a chance that any employees are going to leave their vehicles overnight in this parking lot?
No. No, the employee hours are from, like we said earlier, eight to five, or eight to six, and after six, they close the gates, and that's it. They need to be vacant from the lot.
Okay. That's my biggest concern. Thank you.
One question from me. Walk me through your, your design process in locating the driveway, locating the pedestrian gate, and the pedestrian crossing.
Sure, sure.
They all don't line up.
No, no, they don't. Good question. And I think the main driver for this is that we had to locate, due to the direction that all the water flows on the site, we had to locate all of our water quality features, basically on the west side of the site. So, that in turn gave us a little bit more buffer to put the gate where it could open all the way toward and fully open, as well as include the gate equipment on the west side. Unfortunately, we couldn't relocate everything and push the gate on the north side. There's just not enough room to have that gate fully open and be kind of hanging out in the driveway. We do have, I guess, about 50 feet, give or take, from the pedestrian walkway to the gate access. And I think the intent here is that most of the employees using this side would, would be able-bodied. The site is designed to be ADA accessible in the event that you do have that circumstance. But I think that if there were any employees that had ADA needs, that they could use the main site.
And why did you choose to put the pedestrian crossing where it is?
I think I might need the engineer to come up and answer that question for you.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Zabrocki, representative with Nova Engineering. To answer the question, the walkway is required at that spot due to the utilities across the street. There's an existing tree, power pole, so that if the pedestrian walkway were on that other side, that would have to be, those existing facilities would have to be moved and moving a power pole. And tree is a little more difficult than the pedestrian walkway.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I understand. This is going to be somewhat unusual. Mid-block pedestrian crossings are, are the bane of traffic engineers. And so, the fact that our, our traffic folks are willing to support this gives hope for those of us that like pedestrian environments. So, anyway, thank you very much.
If I could, I do have one comment or request that I'd like to enter into the record. We had discussed with staff early on the undergrounding of utilities and the fact that we would like to pay an in-lu fee rather than underground those facilities or utilities. Engineering seemed to be okay with that and came up with a hard number for us, so we would like to maybe add some language to the condition that would leave that option open to us at the staff's discretion.
I'm going to ask Ms. Chow to weigh in and let us know if we can do that.
Actually, I would like to ask Chris Winters if he had any recent conversations about that particular issue with engineering staff.
Thank you, Patsy, Commissioner. I did speak with our principal engineer, and it is understood in that condition by saying "to the satisfaction of the city engineers complying with this requirement," it is typical that the in-lu fee is considered an option, and the engineering division has no problem with us, including tacking on a statement at the end of that condition to say something to the effect of, "or pay in-lu fee as determined by land development engineering."
So, in fact, the condition already states that, or should we further clarify it? I'm just wondering whether there is a need to further clarify that.
I, I think it's, it's fair to go ahead and add that clarification and change the condition. So, it would be modified slightly to include the in-lu statement.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Oh, wait.
Commissioner Looney?
Almost got away.
Almost. That won't be too hard. Just two things that I appreciate, and that is the lighting. You've taken the time to put some lighting on there for security. Yeah, we're concerned about security for adjacent property owners, but the security of staff coming across the street when it's in December and it's dark, I appreciate that. Also, I appreciate the fact that you're using a wrought iron fence rather than a wire mesh fence. As we've all noticed along the 78 corridor, the wire mesh fencing doesn't stop certain people types from going into the sides of the freeway, because it can be cut so easily. So, to have a wrought iron fence, I mean, they might, depending upon how it's designed, they could pull the pieces apart, but again, if it's designed correctly, it's going to be hard to pull that apart.
I think we'll do our best effort to make that thing pretty sturdy.
And then, one other question is on the driveway gate design. Is that going to be consistent with the fence design?
It should be. It should be able to look very similar to the fence design, yes. I'm sure we can source some materials that look pretty close.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson.
So, this is something, this light is something that's required by the city, but Pace has to pay for it, correct?
Correct.
Just to go on the record.
Correct.
And it will only be initiated when someone pushes the button.
Correct.
Correct. And that will be approximately 30 seconds, 20 seconds?
I believe, in discussions with staff, it's right around 19 seconds long.
Okay. Again, I just think that the neighbors and people that drive that would like to know that it's not going to be a big inconvenience, or at least it doesn't appear to be to me. Thank you.
And it should only be a couple times a day, so for a block in the morning and in
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, this is a public hearing. I have no speaker slips other than Jason's, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak, and then I'm going to close the public hearing. So, we open it up to discussion amongst ourselves. If there's no discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve with the, the discussion about the underground. Is that something we want to add now?
You make a motion to approve?
What is the right language for that?
With the clarification that underground in-lu fees, as approved by the city engineer, be part of the conditions of approval.
Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
I think just to further clarify, I think we need to be specific about which condition we're talking about. Chris, can you verify or confirm, are we looking at condition 3B on page 16 of 49? If that's pertaining to the public improvements and public improvements, including underground conversion to be completed prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy, or would be the payment of the in-lu fee? And I guess Jason can come up to the microphone and clarify whether that's your understanding.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it's condition G3M and Planning Commission L8B.
Could you repeat? You said G?
Excuse me. G3M and L8B. The first condition being on page, excuse me, six. And the planning commission is on page... The first condition being on page, excuse me, 6, and the planning commission is on page...
6 of 49? That's the last exhibit page on the staff report?
Oh, you know what, I'm looking at the, not the staff report conditions. Sorry, yes, I'm looking at a different set of conditions here.
So we're still talking 16 of 49, the condition, it's...
On page 17 of 49, condition M.
So not 3B under improvements?
And it would also be, it's basically reflected, I believe, in 3B, all public improvements, let me double check that. It's not 3B, I don't believe. I think there is a planning condition that reflects some of the language under M that I can locate. The planning condition was more of a generalized statement for undergrounding of, I think the intent is new utilities running to the site to serve the lighting and so on for cabling or new wiring to be undergrounded, probably not a lot applicable to this project. And then on page 25 of 49, thank you, Alter, condition 8B is the general requirement that I was referring to.
So under general requirements, 8B, page 25 of 49, words talking about electrical communication conduits, conductor service facility shall be installed underground within the boundaries of any lot or building site, or any half-street abutting set lot or building site, the owner of such lot or building site shall make the necessary arrangements with each of the serving utilities for underground installation, but we want to tag on the, the payment of the in-lu fee instead.
Correct, we can say or pay in-lu fee as determined by land development engineering.
Chair, I have a question about what we're discussing right now.
Sure.
If you don't mind me jumping ahead.
John, go ahead.
So if, if a developer pays an in-lu fee today, let's just say it's $100,000 for whatever, whatever the engineers determine, they pay the $100,000, the area doesn't get developed for another 10 years from today. So I know the money's in a bucket somewhere, I've seen the buckets. Is it still worth $100,000 in 10 years? Because the cost of developing and doing all the things that we're talking about here are not going to be $100,000. It's going to be 2, 250, 300,000.
The, the fee that they charge, it is based on their current estimates and, and outlook, but as far as how that's specifically done by the engineering division, I've not personally been involved with that process, or how they look down the road to when those fees will be applied, and exactly how they determine the amount that they're charging now. I don't think I'm going to have a detailed answer for you on that, but as you mentioned, it goes into a general fund, projects are prioritized, or they look at streets, certain street segments when other projects are done, and it makes sense to do that undergrounding that takes place at that point.
I'm going to have a problem supporting this, because there's a lot of questions, my questions anyways, that are unanswered. Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson?
I already asked my question.
Okay. Commissioner Savage? Okay, all right. So there's a proposal to add in-lu fees as approved by the city engineer to the, to the question. So would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Savage?
I'd like to, so move with the additional criteria that we, we include that language there.
All right, very good. Commissioner Savage has moved approval with the additional language for the in-lu fee approved by the city engineer. Commissioner Garretson?
I would second the motion.
All right, Commissioners, any further discussion? Seeing none, okay, cast your vote for approval. And it's approved on a 5 to 1 vote, and Commissioner Aguilar is concerned about the in-lu fee.
The in-lu fee.
Okay, very good. All right. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda are reports or comments from the commission members. Any, any comments for staff, questions of staff this evening? Seeing none? Ms. Chow, you're, I'm, I'm sorry?
I'll see. I have a statement, is that what you said? Sorry.
Did you have a comment to make?
I do.
Okay, go.
I would just like for, I guess, Patsy, to bring it up to city council, because this is really a city council issue, you know, the financials, I mean, obviously my questions are from my experience on city council, these are, I feel, things that need to be thought about, and it just didn't really strike me until we brought it up tonight, because we've approved tons of projects where people could pay in-lu fees, but I think that there's got to be a formula that's, figures out, or someone has to be able to predict what it's going to be, when, when the, the project will ultimately be finished, undergrounding of, of utilities, whatever it is, it's being essentially paid for in today's dollars versus 10 or 20 years. And this is kind of unique to Vista, simply because we do have a lot of infill projects today that a lot of other cities don't. I mean, if you go to, you know, any of the newer cities, they just do, everything just gets built. But we have infill projects like this that are changing the way the community looks, and it does, doesn't make a lot of sense sometimes for the developer to, to want to go ahead and do that improvement, but at the same time, we as a city have to protect ourselves about in the future, and I just think it's something that needs to be discussed at the, at the council level. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Looney?
To go along with that, with being in the building industry, in the last four months, my lumber costs have tripled, so instead of spending $30 on a piece of plywood, it now costs my owners $100 a piece of plywood. The same has happened with the electrical wiring. It has tripled in price in the last two months. So if we've got all these buckets within the city, and we've only charged them the current rate, it doesn't pay for, it pays for about a third of the projects in today's dollars if we collected that money five years ago. So I think the points John bring up as well, well, taken, because why aren't we being progressive? Or in some ways, we're, we're being kind, we're being considerate at the cost of our citizens and the city budget in the years to come. So I think, I think that's a really good point that needs to be thought out a little bit further.
Patsy, you'll follow up with, with John and the city council and maybe report back to us next time on how that's done?
Yes, not, not a problem. Heard loud and clear.
It's my recollection that in-lu fees are invested, and so they are generating some money to keep up with inflation, but, but again, we would, we would need to hear more from city staff about that, so, all right. Ms. Chow, your report?
So we will be having a meeting on July 20th, and there are two items on the schedule right now, and after that, we're looking probably August, perhaps not back-to-back meetings, but perhaps one of them, so we'll see how that goes to bring some more projects before you. So just promise us to keep going, staying busy. So that's, that's what it is, and the, the housing element, I don't know if I mentioned to you guys last time, but it did get adopted by city council on June 22nd, and now we are awaiting final comments from state HCD for final certification, and keep your fingers crossed that that's where we're heading, and we'll be done with that, so, thank you.
Commissioner Hastings?
I left it on. Who knows what I said? I started, I got hung up on the in-lu fee thing, and so I'm going to ask questions out of probably a lot of 90k, but in some ways, are not in-lu fees kind of a punitive thing? I mean, they're saying, okay, you're not going to do what we would rather, so instead you're going to do this. So the relationship between the in-lu fees and the actual development of whatever else might be put off is a little separate. Am I making sense about that?
No.
So I'm not sure that, that there's a logical connection between future costs of materials and somebody now paying this in-lu fee. Just something to add to the...
To the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
This kind of thing has been going on for decades.
Yes.
Carbon footprint. So if there is a developer and he wants to tweak the system a little bit, he'll pay a fee to exchange
Right.
...square foot area on some other piece of property for the benefit of himself. And this is just another form of that taking place. You know, if it was a punitive fee, then maybe it is tripled or quadrupled to where we begin to prorate that, you know, five, 10, 15 years out, but who knows what it's going to be.
Can I just interrupt? Because we're, I think it's perfectly fine for every commissioner to express their opinion on the subject, but to now engage in a back-and-forth discussion would make it a non-agendized item discussion, which we probably should not have.
Okay, well, let's do this, let's, let's do that. Let's agendize it and have Patsy or John come back to us and tell us how that whole sys, the in-lu system works. Because I, I know from my experience in this town a long time ago, we have sawtooth development and, and getting road improvements done that are consistent, and we've got the infill projects, so we need to, we need to hear more from staff about, about how all this works, I think. Okay. Now, my question for Patsy. In watching the stuff that's going on in Seaside back in Florida with the collapse of that building and the talk of about a 40-year certification, it occurred to me that we're approving and they're, and the city's building four- and five-story apartments in the town, and I, I got concerned about, well, do they get inspected annually or however, ever often and, and certified? Do we, I don't know that we certify buildings, so how's that work here in Vista, California?
Well, as my knowledge goes when talking to the building folks, our building official, I mean, obviously, you are aware of the fact that prior to occupancy goes through a whole list of inspections, I mean, endless inspections to make sure all the safety standards are all adhered to, and, and in, in that very systematic structural form prior to their occupancy. As far as future, you know, down the road, and I think that's what Chairman Russler, you were talking about, the stability of the structure, all of that, to my knowledge, I don't think the staff is going out there unless their concerns or they're brought up to our attention. We don't systematically over time, you know, monitor the buildings, et cetera. I mean, and some of you Commissioners have much more knowledge than I do on the subject matter as far as construction, architecture, you know, stability, engineering calculations and so on, but we certainly, at the point of occupancy, we determine that, that is all done at that time, and the building is released for occupancy, we, we issue certificates, you know, of compliance and occupancy to make sure that all the standards have been met, but at that point, that's pretty much it, I mean, from the staff standpoint, so...
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or discussion? No? All right, we will stand adjourned then until, until July 20th.